We're good, all right. I will call this special meeting to order, and if you'll join in, the pledge allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll do a rule call and declarations of conflict interest, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes and none.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes and none.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes and none.
Mayor Buble?
I'm here and none. Any idea if he's running late, did you hear?
Okay.
But he was here at 5:00 at the last meeting, so we can give him credit on that, right? Okay, so, welcome to our roads workshop. We will open the public participation and have kind of an opportunity for Mr. Possess to have the dialogue alongside, so if, did you want to start first, Road Doctor, or did you want Michael Baker, how did you want to do this?
What I can do is start this off.
Let's do that. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I apologize for my hoarse voice. I have a frog in here, I don't know what it's doing there, but he got there yesterday.
Can we have you talking to our microphone, please?
Excellent.
That one's not close enough, thank you.
All right.
Otherwise you have to yell, and that doesn't sound like you.
I don't want to yell.
Yeah.
No, not at all, thank you, Mayor. On May 17, we had the previous workshop here, and Michael Baker presented their report on several scenarios that were included in the request for proposals originally, and also in their contract. Based on their presentation, the council suggested additional scenarios to be considered by Michael Baker, so they have done the analysis on those. Those are basically based on a five-year capital improvement plan, or a 10-year with various levels of funding, and all of these are included in the staff report outlined there. I will not bore you by reading them all again. So, no action is required from the council tonight, just your participation and your wisdom at the end of the presentation here to give us direction on the level of funding and the duration of the CIP. Based on that, we will make two presentations next week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, at our outreach meetings here at 5:00 PM. We will look at some of the, we cannot address all of the comments that the public may have, but to the extent that we can, we include those in the final report. Obviously, first and foremost, it is the comments that you have here that will shape the final report for us. Once we include all of those comments, then Michael Baker will finalize their pavement management report. With that, we will have a roadmap, hopefully, on designing and moving the projects forward. Obviously, Michael Baker is here tonight, Jim Porter is here, and we have Dr. Ganji virtually joining us. I'll turn this over to Michael Baker, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have Dr. Vaheed Ganji coming in virtually. Unfortunately, he couldn't join us tonight, he was, came in contact with COVID, and he can't fly, so, you know, it's going around. With that, Dr. Ganji, are you on now?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I will operate the PowerPoint, and Dr. Ganji will talk, so take it away, Vaheed.
Thanks, Tim. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My apologies for not being able to attend in person, I got COVID twice. I still have coffee once in a while, but I'm prepared for that too. But I'll be in the public outreach meeting. Excuse me. With that, I'm going to go over the five, Mr. that briefed that what we did basically from the original on May 17 presentation that we have five years to plan.
Can we just stop? Yes.
It's gonna, he's breaking up, I'm not sure how, if this continues, it'll be hard for the information to be consumed.
Yeah, let's give it a try. If we can't use Dr. Ganji, I can go through the slides, and he can jump in for questions.
Okay.
Okay. So, a couple of changes from this presentation. One is that we added a 10-year CIP to the report. Another thing.
Dr. Ganji, was that a 10-year CIP, you said?
Yeah, a five-year and a 10-year CIP both, yes.
Yes. So we added a, go ahead, go ahead, Vaheed.
And also, the council wanted to remove the assessment district.
One second, before you continue, can I ask, what is the method you're using to transmit your audio to us right now? Is it through your internet, or a device, a cellular device, a phone number?
My phone number.
Oh, you've dialed in, okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me, or can I ask, Tim, to?
Yeah, we can hear you, you break up occasionally, but keep going, if we need to stop you, we'll stop you.
Okay. So, another big difference is that we took the assessment district out from the analysis for budget scenarios. And the last change that we made per city recommendation, we changed the decision tree in the street saver. This has been all updated in the street saver. And we assigned all the streets that were part of the assessment district, in the street saver, we changed from District 1, or 2, or 4, we changed them to a separate district called assessment district.
Vaheed, can you explain what you did with the decision tree? I think there were some questions on this end, was that, was that what I was reading here?
I couldn't hear what you changed.
The decision trees are, basically, it's the PCI category that Street Saver uses from very poor to poor to good and very good condition. Those we updated. And the other thing is the treatments, the list of treatments that is typical of the city of Turlock, like mill and overlay asphalt, rubber, cape seal, slurry seal, so those treatments were also updated in this favor.
Okay, so let me summarize real quick. So what he did was, the old report really was based on a five-year capital improvement program. He's now giving you a five-year capital improvement program, and a 10-year capital improvement program, with various funding scenarios, and he's pulled out the assessment districts as requested. So that's, is that correct, Vaheed?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we get into the PowerPoint now? Are you ready?
Yeah, you can go to the next slide.
Okay, we're on slide 2 now.
Yeah, basically, I don't go over the previous slides that we presented, this is just the work that we did. Next slide.
All right, this just goes through the pavement cracking.
Yeah, basically, it shows the images that we collected for the entire city, samples of it.
Okay.
These would be presented to the public outreach, so they see the works that basically, the engineering that went behind, behind a five or 10-year CIP program. Next slide, please.
All right, it was, is another example, the QC'd 50% plus of selected distressed areas?
Yeah, we did QC addition to the automated distresses that the program picks. We also manually do QC of the distresses, make sure that they are categorized correctly, classified correctly. Next slide, please.
Okay, now we're on the pie charts.
Yep. So, in this slide, basically, we measure the size of each district. The pie chart at the bottom shows the percentage of area for each district, and you can see the assessment district has about 24% of the area or the pavement surfaces belong to the assessment district. And the smallest area is District 3, with 11% of pavement.
Okay, ready for the next slide?
What are those, the ACs and AC, PCs in the corner, what do those stand for?
So those are the different types of roadway surfaces you have. AC is asphalt concrete, so that's like blacktop. AC, AC means there's AC over a layer of AC, so it's been an existing road that's been overlaid.
Mm-hmm.
AC over PCC means that there was concrete, PCC is Portland cement concrete, so it's a concrete road, and then AC was put on top of it, so you paved over the AC, and then PCC is Portland cement concrete, so that's just a concrete road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Overall, more than 0.6% of the pavement has an asphalt surface.
Correct. Are you ready for the next slide?
Yeah, next slide, please.
All right, oops. Yeah, we did there. Okay, now we're on the City of Turlock pavement network statistics.
Yeah, that's basically the distribution of the lane mile, based on the arterial collector residential, and the PCI that we calculated as of May 2022, which is 62, the PCI of the entire city is 62. Next slide, please.
Okay, we're on the next slide.
Could you go back to the previous slide? What is the local category, or row, local seven, and it says like there's one section that is a local, is that a local road? What is that, if it is?
Yeah, that's, I think that's, that's one of the streets in the Street Saver has a separate category, it's only one. I really don't know why it has a separate classification, but it's so small that it doesn't affect.
Only one what, though?
So, that could be.
One street.
So it could be like an alley, something that's not necessarily classified as a residential street, where it's houses on it, or a collector's street that collects the residuals and gets you through town. There's only one section of that, though. Okay, you ready for the next slide?
Yes, the next slide, basically, it shows the condition of the network. Now that we, the assessment district, we prepared this chart to show what is the network condition for each district separately. If you look at the pie chart, basically, that shows the PCI for the five districts. The blue one is the assessment district, PCI is 84, is the highest, that means they are in very good category, PCI.
So you can, so you can see on the chart, on the chart on top, the assessment district is the furthest left, that big green bar, it means they've, very good streets over there. And then as you go across, there's districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, so they get, actually, districts 1 and 2 seem to have the worst asphalt, but certainly the assessment districts have the best.
Yeah. District 1 and 2 are the highest red category, or very poor category.
Yeah.
And the overall PCI number for the two districts is 48 and 44.
Right, right.
They are in poorer condition than other districts.
Ready for the next slide?
Okay.
This is the 2013 network map, so this was the PCI from 2013.
Yeah, this map, basically, the Street Saver, we still have the assessment district data in there. Back in 2013, the average network PCI, including assessment district, was 69. Next slide, please.
Okay, 2022?
Yeah, in this slide, we took the assessment districts out, and this shows the 2022 PCI, which is 62.
Okay.
Still relatively, you know, if you look at the classification, 62 is still is being classified as good condition.
But you can see from the map that districts 1 and 2, you know, on the southern part of the city, definitely have a lot more red than the northern.
A lot smaller.
Yeah, all right, I'll go to the next slide.
Next slide.
Okay, 2027, no funding?
Yeah, if no funding is available, the PCI is going to drop to 44, and then you see a lot more streets in very poor category.
Right, so that's if.
Those are.
Yeah, that's if you do nothing, if you stop paying for street resurfacing today, that's what it would look like in five years.
In five years, exactly.
Right, okay, I'll.
And then the next slide.
All right, the next slide is 2032, if you do nothing.
Yeah, if you do nothing, basically, in 10 years, pretty much majority of the streets are going to be in very poor condition.
Right, and again, that's excluding the assessment districts, those have been pulled out at council's request.
Correct.
Okay, I'll go to the next slide. This is the predicted PCI?
Yes, basically, we predicted the, using Street Saver, predicted the performance of the, if no funding is available, and you can see that the PCI drops almost two points every year. And in 2037, pretty much all the streets have been very poor category.
Right, okay, we'll go to the next slide. Peep? Go ahead, Vaheed.
We did, basically, as I mentioned, we updated the decision tree. This was provided to us by the city. At the bottom of the tree, you see the decision tree, what type of treatment, and also the city provided us with the unit cost for those treatments.
And just to add to that, what this shows you is the different types of treatments that are recommended for different PCI. So if you've got fairly good asphalt, usually put a slurry seal or a cape seal on it. As the asphalt gets more deteriorated, that's when you get into street resurfacing, and grind and overlay, that kind of thing. And as it fails, you know, gets really bad to the 0 to 24, that's when you do a reconstruct. So the whole concept of pavement management is that you try to keep the roads in good condition, try to keep them at good condition, because it's a lot cheaper. It's about 1/10 of the cost to do a slurry seal than it is to do a full paving job. So the idea is, with Street Saver, is it strategically looks at your streets, and it recommends different types of treatment to bring that PCI up to a certain level, but once you get to that level, you want to make sure that you maintain it at a good level, at a reasonably low cost, and don't let it deteriorate again, so you don't have to reconstruct. All right, Vaheed, you ready for the next slide?
Yeah, well said, basically, these are the tools that are available to the city, what kind of the different treatment.
Yeah.
So what the Street Saver, or the pavement management system, they do, they use these tools at different years, and they go through an optimization algorithm to make the best out of the available funding. If you tell the program, basically, you have $10 million per year to spend on the street, it tries to maximize the pavement condition for that $10 million. So it selects different streets, it goes through iteration, and finds out what is the best user that allocated funding.
Okay.
On the other hand, you can also set the program that I would like to, all the streets to have a PCI of minimum 15, so none of them would be in poor or very poor condition.
Right.
And then the program goes through, again, optimization, and it uses the minimum budget that you need to achieve that goal. It's called target-driven analysis.
So if I could just, for just a second, I think this, this workshop's kind of for us, and I think we're all there, we understand if we don't do anything, the roads get bad. I think we can expedite this and move a little bit along in reference to this, am I?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let me, here's, I'm going to the next slide, Vaheed, it's the graph of the five-year and 10-year CIP. This is kind of the meat of it, where you're getting the funding.
That's basically summary of the work that we did, and that, we put it in a graph format, it makes easier to make decisions, basically. These graphs, I'm going to spend a little bit of time explaining what it is. Basically, because we have two CIP, one is five years, one is 10 years, the blue one is five years, the green one is 10 years. So we calculated the budget to be able to compare average to average between the five and 10 years. Obviously, 10 years is the longest CIP, so the total budget is more, the annual budget we plotted based on the actual budget.
Yeah.
So what this graph gave as zero funding in five years, basically, for the five-year CIP, PCI would be 40, for 10 years would be 33. The more funding put into the street, the higher the PCI would become. So this is, this helps, basically, the city to decide what level of funding is available, and what can be achieved with that funding, what PCI can be achieved.
Yeah, and this is outlined further in the PowerPoint, so I'm going to go to the next slide, Vaheed, this is the one that's pretty important.
Yeah, basically, for example, if a 10-year program, if you want all the streets to be above 50, which means no red or poor or very poor category, then the amount of expenditure per year is about $28 million.
So, yeah, let me try to summarize this pretty quickly. So, the first several rows are for the five-year CIP, and so the first row is, if you want to have all streets be a minimum of 70 PCI, so all your streets are in pretty good shape, you need to spend $40 million a year over five years to get there. If you want all streets, so the next row, if you want all streets to have a PCI of 50 or above, which is, you know, not as good as 70, but it's still in the fair condition, you'll be spending 38 million roughly a year. Now, I want to point out the fourth column over, it says final PCI with treatment. So what I just described was each street having a minimum PCI, but if you were to get to that minimum PCI of 50, your overall network PCI, and this is in the case of 50, would be 83, right? And so on the 70, your overall network PCI is 84. And you can see, you don't get a whole lot more bang for your buck for that extra million and a half, so that's, again, a policy decision that the council needs to make on how much you would like to spend. But let's, let's keep going and talk a little bit more about the five-year.
I have a question on this slide, is that the annual cost, is that bringing up every road and reconstructing every road, and does that also include the maintenance of all the roads that would need to be maintained? Like if, year one, we get these roads up to, a couple roads up to 70, does that next year, you know, the next annual cost, does that include the maintenance of that previous road?
So it kind of depends on how you define maintenance. So maintenance, you're doing maintenance through the CIP, through the CIP program.
Right.
There's also roadway maintenance that your road crews do.
That's what I'm talking about.
Go out and crack ceiling and all that.
That's what I'm talking about.
That is not included in this, because we don't know what your road crews do, but to have a, you know, properly functioning pavement system, you really need a public works road crews going out and crack sealing where necessary, filling in potholes where necessary, and doing that kind of maintenance on a day-to-day basis, that's going to help preserve the pavement surface, and to make it more rideable, basically.
Okay, so throughout this presentation, you guys haven't looked at how much it would cost to maintain a newly constructed road? Or our PCI, our average PCI level of, let's say our city's like a 56, if we get to fix it 56, how much would that maintenance would cost?
The way pavements deteriorate is, if I paved something yesterday, you're not going to need to maintain it for a while. The first thing you'll be doing is crack sealing. Cracks will start to appear over time, in the years, right? So it shouldn't happen right away. At that point, your road crews come in and do that crack sealing, or if there's a subgrade problem and there's potholing, you need to do that fix. But, no, we didn't estimate what it's going to cost for you to run a maintenance department in the city. That's something that your public works staff will need to figure out, because I don't know what your maintenance is right now.
If I make.
Go ahead, Vaheed.
Because preventive, the thing for preventive maintenance has been said, if we surface it all, then you do that, if it's in good condition, it's part of the maintenance.
Right.
So the cost of maintenance, that's included in this numbers.
So what Vaheed is saying is, part of that maintenance is the slurry seals we talk about. So if you overlaid a road yesterday, usually within seven to 10 years, you need some sort of surface treatment, because it starts to get, it degrades environmentally. That's part of a maintenance program. Now, your city crews won't be doing that, that's included in the CIP. I mean, they could, but I don't know that you got that kind of equipment here.
Okay, so you, the slurry sealing is included?
Yes, the slurry sealing, the cape sealing, it's all included in the CIP. What's not included is your day-to-day crack sealing, pothole repair, that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, actually, the program also allows some stopgap measures for maintenance, like pothole repairs. So if the budget is not used in the detail of the report, tells you that you have $500,000 So if the budget is not used in the detail of the report, tells you that you have $500,000 this year for repairs. Those would be stopgap repairs.
Okay.
Basically, city crews go out and...
Can you elaborate?
It does show you how much left the budget for those repairs.
So could you repeat the stopgap repairs? I didn't catch that, that broke up.
When we set the program, let's say we have $28 million to spend, the program tries to pop my treatment and it comes, let's say, 27.5. So the other $500,000 allocated to stopgap repairs. Those would be city crew going out, potholes.
Okay.
So it is included in the overall cost.
So as part, what Vaheed has included is basically $500,000 a year of what he called stopgap repairs, which is this kind of pothling, crack sealing, and that sort of stuff. Is that correct, Vaheed?
Yes.
Okay.
So this budget includes everything.
Okay, so you get, you get the, the $500,000 then is allocated for the crack sealing and the pothole repairs and the stuff that you would normally do with a road crew. So my mistake, I didn't think it was included. It sounds like it is included. He's got $500,000 a year for that, which is a reasonable amount of money, I think, for the size of your city. But just to kind of finish what this chart says is, if you go to budget 10.5 million, basically, so if you spend 10.5 million a year, your final PCI over five years is going to be 56. Now, right now, it's 62. So it's clear that 10 and a half million a year is not gonna help your pavement stay even the way it is now. If you spend 28 million a year, you get a PCI of 74, which is much better. Now, you can run the program at different funding scenarios. So, you know, you can run it at 20 million a year and see what is gonna happen. But it's pretty clear that, you know, at 10.5 million a year, you're gonna continue to have degrading pavement. So there's gonna need to be some spending in addition to that. But we basically tried to run the scenarios that the council was asking for at your last meeting. And again, really, to make this effective, the council at some point is gonna need to decide how much you want to spend annually on paving. And that's gonna vary from year to year because budgets vary from year to year. But if you plug that into the program, you're gonna be able to see what the PCI, what the outcome of that spending is over time. All right. And then the 10-year is very similar, it just spreads it out further, you know, but it's a very similar type of graph. So at 10 million a year, or 10.5 million a year, your PCI, your final PCI is 56, which is similar to what it would have been under the other scenario, the five-year scenario. So it's, it's going to be necessary to spend, well, I can see in the 10-year, if you have a $15.5 million budget a year over 10 years, you get to a PCI of 65, which is a little bit better than what you've got now. So you figure if you want to improve roads, you're gonna wanna be above 15 mil a year to do that.
Yeah. If you can go back one spot to the graph...
Okay, I'm on the graph.
Yeah. Basically, here, you can see it's almost a linear trend. So for budget $20 million, you have PCI of 74. For 10 million, you have PCI of 57. If you want to spend $20 million, then you can read what would be the PCI for that budget.
Yeah, thanks, Vaheed. So this basically summarizes what different spending levels will do to the PCI. So the green, the green arrow is the 10-year CIP and the blue is the five-year CIP. So if you spend 25, well, let's say, $25 million a year for the five-year CIP, you'll be up to a 70. And for the 10-year CIP, you would be up to 80. Is that understandable? So this basically, this is kind of a quick kind of cheat sheet, for a better word. For, if you figure out how much you want to spend each year, you can kind of tell what PCI you're gonna get over time.
So from this, you're asking from us what tonight?
So this is basically a presentation providing you the information that you asked for last time.
Okay.
So the next step in this, once we finalize this, is for us to turn over Streetsaver to your staff. You, through your normal budgeting process, will determine how much you want to spend every year on paving. That'll be plugged into the Streetsaver program, and that's gonna recommend to the Public Works Department, or whoever's gonna do your paving, what that pavement program should be. And it'll call out individual streets and what the treatment should be. Now, that is simply a recommendation based upon a program that optimizes how the pavement should be treated. When you start looking at how you're gonna do construction, you tend to like to get streets closer together in certain areas because it makes it more cost efficient for the contractor to be working in a specific area and not running all over town chasing different streets. That's not productive and you're gonna get higher costs for that. So you'll be able to do less streets. So that's where you have Fred in your Public Works Department to look at the Streetsaver data, look at the output, and say, "Well, we've got streets all over town. Doesn't it make sense to do some streets down here that maybe we would have done next year, but they're closer to the streets we're gonna do this year? And maybe we'll put off some of the streets that were up here and do them next year altogether." See, there's a bit of, you call that engineering judgment, it's best friend for it. But you can't just take this program and say, "Boom, this is the streets that I'm gonna pay because the Streetsaver program says so." There needs to be some judgment into how you do that. Because I think you also have a construction management firm onboard. They can assist you in telling you about productivity and what makes sense from a construction perspective on, you know, what streets to group. But again, that's something that the city's gotta decide. This is merely a tool that you use to be able to decide how you're gonna do your streets. And every year, you can update it based upon how much money you want to spend. And in fact, after every year's program, you need to update Streetsaver so it can reflect that the streets that you've done are likely, if it's an overlay, it's a PCI 100. So that brings your PCI up in the program. And then the program starts to look at the other streets that need more attention.
Did you have a chance to look into a scenario? Is this 10.5 million, I guess this is my question, is that the money that you guys already know that we have allocated to roads? Because we do have funds allocated to roads right now in our city.
I believe that was a number of available sources that you have that could be used for paving.
Right.
It's up to the council to decide, you know, how you wanna do it.
Right, I understand, we've done this, yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah.
But, so I'm wondering if you've ran a scenario with all of the available funds that we have towards roads today within this presentation?
My understanding is, today, you have 10.5 million a year, is what I understand. Is that true?
I'm looking at staff, I'm not, I think so. I know it's more than 7.5 million. Plus rejeté.
I thought it was 10.5.
So is this the exact presentation you're going to give to the...
Oh, no.
Okay, okay. Because this seemed a little bit down in the weeds.
Yeah.
In my estimations, if I were, if I were making suggestions, I think it comes up to handing it to staff and saying, "Provide some clusters in each district that make sense when we start to do maintenance because then it's more cost efficient." I don't think that's something we're asking you. We would be asking Mr. Possession and them. So I don't know, are there any other requests off of Michael Baker tonight that you all have that, before it goes to the public, just to see it and hear it?
Another question. So with this hypothetical of us spending, you know, like, on the high end of potentially 25, 30 million dollars or more a year budgeting for that in-road repair, are we confident that we're gonna be able to, we can budget for it, but can we spend it at a rate that we'll be able to maintain? I know that we've struggled to get road projects in the pipeline and started and completed in, on schedule. If we go with a high-budget request, is there confidence that we're actually gonna be able to make those spending?
I would defer to staff on that, but I know that the city just went out for an on-call consulting contract for several consultants. The way that you would be able to spend 28 million, let's say, is either hire a very large firm that can throw a lot of people at this, or hire multiple firms and have multiple firms take different areas of the city and do it that way. I know some jurisdictions do it that way. They basically have three or four consultants onboard and each consultant gets a section of town and they do the design. So the capacity issue is really how many people you have working on that project, or how many firms. And I believe you're set up now where you've got multiple on-call firms. So you can essentially call from the bench and have people do all these designs for you. But that's a discussion with staff, actually.
And is that cost incorporated into this? Would that be from this budgeted figure, the design work?
Yeah, Vaheed, this includes design, right?
This includes everything.
Yep, it's all in. Construction management, the whole thing.
Hmm.
Now, this, and I just want to caution you that this is a snapshot in time, right? So we basically took the unit prices for slurry seal and overlay and all that based upon bids that have been received lately. Now, over time, the bidding environment is going to change. If the price of oil goes up, asphalt costs more. So every year, you've gotta update your, I don't wanna say decision tree, but the unit prices for each type of treatment because that's gonna vary over time. So that would be the one disclaimer, I would say, is that it's really kind of a living document, so to speak. You need to be running the program, you need to be updating the unit costs. And every year, when you've done work, you've gotta put that, you know, work into the program that you've done street X from here to here, went from a 50 to 100 because you totally reconstructed it. And that will be reflected in the program itself.
So you said that this includes the planning and engineering, the design, designing of those roads? And that's assuming that these are contracted, consulted engineer services, correct?
Well, we took a percentage, it's usually around 10%. That can be staff or a consultant, doesn't really matter.
Okay, so it still is conducive to the scenario that we have in-house engineers and planners doing that? So, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. If you could hire, you know, enough internal staff, you'd do it all in-house. I know my last jurisdiction, we did all the design work in-house.
Right, but if there's, I think that the will in council is to not, to not have that services be in-house because of the assumption that there might be cheaper outside. So I'm wondering if, if you're including the, that fee, I'm not sure if it's going to totally reflect our staffing scenario. If it's 5%, or 10% of this design fee, we already budget for those salaried positions, so it wouldn't even be a cost that we would assume would increase.
Right, if you budget it out of the general fund, if your public works employees aren't charging to likely the gas tax, which is how you typically pay for these things. But again, that's however you've budgeted. So in theory, if your employees are charging off the general fund, then yeah, you're not, that frees up those dollars for construction.
If I, if I...
Yeah, go ahead.
I can, because there's 5% inflation, the prices.
Okay.
And that was based on data, consumer price in that it shows it in our...
Right.
Obviously, you cannot predict what is now, there's 5% inflation.
Right, so when Dr. Ganji ran this program, they put in a 5% inflation rate, just, and that would, that would account for increases in unit costs and salary increases for staff and all that.
Correct.
But in order to give you a more accurate reflection of what those total costs are, it's been inflated, or it's been adjusted by a 5% inflator so that it's a little more accurate over time.
So, not to like rush you along here, but is that the presentation, so I can open it to the public and let them have some questions for you?
Yeah, let me just slide through this real quick, just to make sure we didn't miss everything. Because these are basically maps, you don't need to see the, I mean, you can see it, you're seeing it now, but it's not gonna get you too much further. This slide, you might want to see, this is the different costs for different districts that we're recommending through this, through the Streetsaver program. So basically, what it shows is districts one and two are the districts with the roads that are in the worst shape. So we allocated additional money to those districts. As you can see, for all years, the column to the right is all years. 29% is allocated to District One, 35% to District Two, 16% to District Three, and 19% to District Four. And that really reflects the condition of the roads in those districts. So we're recommending that additional funds be spent where the, you know, where the roads are the worst. And where the roads are a little bit better, they'll receive a little bit less paving, but their roads are better right now. So that brings the overall network PCI up. And that's just the pavement preservation. That's it, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna have some public comments, and if you would kind of keep a log of what questions you're able to answer, please?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this presentation? Come on up. Or not? Don't be shy.
On this very large report you prepared, did it have anything in there about other expenses coming up when you did your survey? For example, there's 15 streets that were budgeted to be fixed this year, blah, 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 and all of a sudden it needs another million and a dollar, million and a half dollars worth of engineering. How many of those other roads don't have that engineering figured in there? Also, on your 2022 map that you had up there, it showed a Golden State being red and a Hedstrom that's being red, and it seems to me that those are being fixed right now. One's actually already done. And I wonder if you can update your thing for roads that have been completed since you first drove your fancy truck down there? Thank you.
Sure.
Would you...
We're gonna go ahead and get all of them, then we'll just... Anyone else?
Evening. Okay, I wrote a bunch of notes. What, in your package, what figure is the PCI map for 2022? In other words, the current PCI? I think people would be interested in seeing that and being able to compare the different scenarios to what today is, okay? Okay, so there's gonna be presentations, I think, next week, I think it is. Are council members going to be at those presentations also? Let's see, my neighbor asked me the question, he makes the comment that motorcycles and sensors at stop signs, I guess because the newer motorcycles are made more of aluminum and plastic than what they are of metal, that a lot of times the sensors don't detect them. So just want to hope that when the actual design work is done, that consideration is taken into account. Let me see. Oh, yes. Financing. Okay, so I believe I talked to our finance director, I think it was two or three months ago, last time we had a presentation on this. And I was told that there was a committee that was put together that was looking at the different financing options, whether we could do lease revenue bonds, what TIFA loans might be possible. Because obviously, 10 and a half million dollars a year doesn't hack it, okay? So if we want to do something, we're gonna have to do some type of debt, some type of financing. That information, of course, is gonna be critical to the five decision-makers here and important to the public. And then, perhaps you can explain, perhaps I'm incorrect on this, but I seem to remember that a year ago, almost exactly a year ago, when the presentation for the three companies, the three bids were given, that PFIC, MBI told us that they had selected 15 roads that they thought required minimal design engineering, and that within, I think it was 90 days, they would be able to go out and start construction. And they had the list of 15 roads, two of which have been taken out and replaced with Fosberg and Wayside. And in total disclosure, I found out that one of those roads that was taken out was the road in front of my house. Okay. So my question is, is that we were told, or my understanding is that we were told that it would require minimal design engineering work and weather permitting, construction could actually start within 90 days. If I understood right, it's come back that we've had, had to spend one and a half million dollars on the engineering design work for those 15 roads and, excuse me, and the construction is, and one of them is just gonna start here in next month, I think it is. So I kind of look at that as a large change order, okay? So perhaps you can explain why that happened? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to make comments or questions? Okay, we will close the public comment section and bring it back to you, Mr. Porter.
Okay, so I wrote these down. First one was, how much will other parts of the project cost? So maybe let me answer two parts of the question, the 90-day discussion we had at the beginning. So when we first were talking to the council, there was a partnership between MBI, PFIC, and Granite Rock to do essentially what's called a P3, a public-private partnership, which is kind of similar to design-build, a design-build type method of work. which is kind of similar to design build, a design-build type method of working, where we would actually design the work with the contractor, there wouldn't need to be a bidding process or anything, and we could go out and do the work. That didn't happen. We didn't do design-build. What's going on now is a design-bid-build process. And we did assume 90 days because we did assume that the roads were going to be a simple grind and overlay. In looking at those streets, there are no streets that are simple grind and overlay that, that we looked at. As part of this project, we're replacing handicap ramps, we're replacing the bubbler systems, we're repairing curb and gutter and drainage on these roads. There's a lot of work that's being done right now. We're putting in some sidewalks for safe routes to school-type stuff. So this is not a simple grind and overlay. Um, that gets back to the questions about other parts of the project costs. So what we did was, based upon our design of these 15 streets, we have a certain percentage, we just broke out the cost for handicap ramps or ADA ramps, uh, curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk, tree removal, that sort of thing, as a percentage, and added that in through, to the Streetsaver cost. So this, um, this cost in Streetsaver does reflect all of these things that are not necessarily related to the pavement, but need to be done to, um, make the street, you know, appear in good condition, to fix all the broken curb and gutter, to fix those dips in the road where you've got drainage problems. That's all being done as part of this project. And that's not a simple 90-day process. That involved surveying, it involved, um, essentially, um, putting in, designing new alignments for all of these things and new elevations. So that's the difference between, uh, 90 days and what it took, and that addresses the issue of cost. Uh, cert, uh, update certain streets that have been overlaid. So if there were streets that are overlaid that reflect red in here, we can easily update that. We can work with your city staff to get the information. Uh, we thought we had that, but if there's, there's specific streets, we can certainly add that in. What is the current PCI? It's 62. It's on the screen right there. Motorcycle can't register on loops. So, um, the way that vehicles are detected at intersections are through inductive loops, and they're actually tuned. So it sounds like what's happening is the tuning on this intersection where the motorcycles aren't being picked up or incorrect. I assume you have a signal maintenance contractor. If they know the location of where this motorcycle isn't getting picked up, let your signal maintenance contractor know, they will fine-tune those loops, and you should be able to, uh, pick up the motorcycles. Uh, there was a financing question, uh, that I believe is more of a council issue. I don't think that's a Michael Baker issue. And that's what I picked up in the questions.
Real quick, Mr. Moreno, if you would speak to, was there a committee or something that I wasn't aware of, or staff, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Councilmember. So what they're referring to is, actually PFIC does have a proposal within the document itself that identifies different funding sources. We have started to assess previously, which was talked about in one of the staff reports when we had a change order of issuing debt, um, looking at what that number potentially may be, about 125, to be able to assess, uh, utilizing Measure A, because we collect about 7.7 million right now, um, for our sales tax component, taking that with some of the, the other dollars and kind of combingling that to get a project together. And that's how you come up with some of the dollars and the information that we're utilizing in that pa, in that package. So we have started assessing funding sources, um, always looking at grants, obviously too as well. Uh, we, we took the information that was provided in there, but relieved a lot of it was about bond issuance and things of that nature. Also talked about utilizing step money, uh, funding sources that are coming out of COG. We're doing all those things already, right? So really what it comes down to is an issuance, so some kind of funding source. Um, it could be a private placement or a bond issuance, uh, and again, we'll continue, always look at grants. Uh, so yes, we have started looking at those funding sources, our funding sources, we started to identify dollars. That's where you're seeing this 10.5 come in. Talking about basically that 10.5 because of what Measure L dollars mixed in with Measure A, that's how you come up with that dollar and that funding source. So yeah, we've already started having these conversations internally, uh, to help get this report to where it is now. Um, and now it's really just getting back to where we're going. What does it look like?
Sure. Sounds like your tax dollars at work. I appreciate that. Um, so for Michael Baker, how much have we paid you so far for this report?
You know, I, I don't know that right now. I haven't seen the billing. Um, Fred, do you know?
Well, this report, it should be, but Amendment Number Three, just about 600, 600,000.
$600,000, okay. Okay, okay. So to have the report come back with Streetsaver data updated, that basically reflects if we don't do anything, our road quality will diminish, and if we spend more money, it will either stay the same, or, um, you know, with more money, can, we can help increase it within five to 10 years. Is this data that we could have collected previously through our Streetsaver, Streetsaver software that we've always had for the last 10 years? Staff?
Mr. Madden?
The, uh, we could have collected data utilizing existing software. Unfortunately, that software is outdated relative to the, to the software and equipment that, uh, Michael Baker utilized in their analysis. It's far more accurate, uh, and, and in more detail than we, what we would have been able to perform in-house. Plus, the length of time it would have taken, we'd still be doing the data gathering versus what Michael Baker did.
Fair, great. So this new updated data will come back to staff to really put together a plan of how we can, um, re, bring our road network up to code? Is that kind of the plan going forward, is how staff and Michael Baker will work together to do that?
Yes, that, that would be the plan. As, as roads continue to be improved, uh, we would utilize that information as well as, uh, enter information relative to the roads that are continuing to degrade, uh, just as the presentation commented on. You know, you can spend a minimal amount of money each year on road repairs, uh, but your overall PCI is going to continue to degrade. Uh, and as was stated earlier, the more you spend on upgrading the roads, the longer you're going to cause your PCI to either remain the same or, or improve.
So, um, we're at a six o'clock cutoff or before that, so a lot of people just walked in. This is the end of just a workshop for us about roads. There's going to be ones for you guys as well, so you can really kind of bite into it. Um, Mr. Madden, Mr. Possesh, did you get enough understanding of what we're looking at from this point? I mean, it says no action, but you guys understand what we're just, what we're thinking? Is that safe to say?
Yes.
All right? Uh, we're just, I mean, we're going to have to let the, the public figure out what, what their, uh, appetite is. So the next two council, uh, pres, roads workshops are, um, District One and Two on 9/20 at 5:00 PM here, and then District Threes and, Three and Four are 9/21 here. And, uh, Mr. Wilson, uh, the council are not going to be here, we're not running it, you are, correct?
Yeah, I'll be hosting the meetings, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, uh, we will just take a five-minute break real quick, uh, before we start our regular scheduled, um, meeting, so, uh, give us a second. Thank you.